January thirteenth, regular meeting of the North Lamar Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM. Showing all board members present. We'll move to item number two, invocation and pledge allegiance led by Mr. Red Holmes, followed by Mrs. Miller and the Stone Middle School students.
Let us pray. Most gracious heaven, Father, we come to this table, Lord, just thanking you for this day. Lord, we thank you for this school district, what it means to this community. We just leave each and every student up to you at this table, Lord. We just ask you for your hand of protection upon each and every student here, Lord. With all the violence going on all over the world, we pray for each and every student. We ask you to continue to bless the staff here, Lord. We've got an awesome staff, just be with them and their families, watch over them, give them strength, just get up. Come do the best they can every day, Lord. We just thank you for the administration in this board, Lord, and its leadership that we move forward and everything that we do will be pleasing to you. And we just ask you to be with our first responders, EMS, fire, police, our military all over the country, so we can enjoy this freedom that we have. These things we ask of Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm Jeremy Watson, the instructor for the Stone Multi-Midi class. I've got a few of the kids here, it's Aggy Ma, Austin Ross, Jason Briscoe, and Aiden Petticus. You'll have opportunity to see some stuff from them later, but they're going to lead us in the pledge at this moment.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the United States of America, with its citizens, our nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The item three, public testimony, no one signed up, so we'll move to item four, consent agenda. We'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda unless someone wants to pull an item. Made by Red, seconded by Bo, is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Item five, action and discussion items, five A, discussion only, attendance and enrollment. Mr. Watson?
Okay, I left the attendance there on your table. And again, the top column is our actual students present or enrolled. Higgins has three hundred and thirty-four, Everett, two hundred and forty-five students. Parker is two hundred and forty-three. Bailey is three oh-six. Stone is at five fifty-six, and the high school at seven thirty-seven. That's as of the eighth of January, which gives a total of twenty-four twenty-one. Remember, the bottom one is our ADA, and this is where we get our funds from. And if you'll look at the, how it's changed from December to January, overall, we've added two kids to the district, which is always good. On the back, on number two, it says the total ADA through. This is our average, is twenty-three oh-two, and that's at a attendance rate of ninety-six point five-five percent. Again, we budgeted for twenty-two forty-five, and so we're still above that number, so that's always good because that gives us a little bit of money to play with. I left you another form. At the beginning of the year, when I went around the campuses, and I was explaining to them that we had lost, the number of students that we had lost over the year. The questions came up, and you know, does anybody know why we're losing some students? And I knew of a couple of friends of mine, but they told me, but overall, there was no data out there. So our administrative team here at the administration building sat down and visited to see how we could possibly gather data to kind of see if there's areas that we can improve in to help keep the students that we have. And this form is what we have at each campus, and as students are leaving the district, it's kind of a survey, if you look on the back, it's real quick, takes them about two minutes to fill out, and they just kind of rate us by that scale that you see there. And what we're able to do is take that and gather data and kind of look at areas. If there's an area that is constantly being checked, is maybe one of the reasons why they're leaving, then as a district, we can look at that data and make, educate decisions on what we need to do to improve so that we have students and especially parents that want to keep their students in our district. And so I wanted to share that with you and that you know what our team here has kind of developed to help us kind of track some of the data on this. Does anybody have any questions on the attendance, are they tracking for? So far, you know, at midterm, we always have a lot of students that leave and then go get students, and we've probably had a dozen or so, and for the biggest part, they're taking the time and filling them out. And so we've done it together, some data, and it's helping us start to plan for our future.
Thanks. Item five B, discussion only, two thousand eighteen nineteen, North Lamar ISD taper report. Dr. Chadwick?
Okay, so what I gave you is just a guide to help us walk through this taper report, and then that way we can reference back if you have any questions. I also created a comparison report of county schools that I was wanting to say for, after we go through everything else in the taper report, so that then we can have any question answer that you want to bring to the table. So to start out, like I said, I'm just going to kind of follow this slide and follow your pages. I have the slides numbered on the pages, and I'll be calling out what page this is in your board report. So first off, what the taper is, it's compiled by TEA for every district and county with needs and student assessment data. Beginning in seventeen eighteen, taper is published in two different formats. Comprehensive, dynamic, online system, which is really nice because they come in and they update data as it happens, so it's live. And then there's the PDF version. The PDF version is the version that you have, and it's the one that's required by law to go for through public notification, and it will be included in our annual report when Ms. Coleman presents that. So on your cover page, which is page thirty of the board report, it shows our accountability letter of grade rating. This is all determined at the district level, not at a campus level. So this, the accountability rating was a B. The exact score was an eighty-nine. Our twenty-nineteen social education determination status is meets requirement. And there's only two options, it's either you meet or you don't on that one. On pages thirty-two through thirty-six in your board book, you see the star performance data. You have all three performance rates of approaches, meets, or masters for all subjects. For each assessment, all grades, all subjects. And the performance data includes results from the twenty-nineteen accountability year. That's the performance data. We're going to get in the back where there's some data that's a year old, and then there's also data that's two years old in the back of this report. In that performance data, it includes summer twenty-eighteen end-of-course exams, December twenty-eighteen end-of-course exams, which are for retesters, and then spring twenty-nineteen end-of-course, and all of the three through eight, first and second administration of fifth and eighth grade as a top. Math and reading. It only includes results for students in our accountability grouping, so students that were not here for our October snapshot are not included in these rate in this data. On page thirty-seven, it gives us the academic growth by grade percentage for the district. Again, that's showing that performance in the form of growth. So it gives the difference in prior year and current as a percentage. This was also presented when I did present the accountability. Prior year and student success initiative is on page thirty-eight. Progress of prior year non-proficient students in reading was forty-seven percent, and in math was seventy-one percent. Both of those are greater than the state averages. Also, student success initiative, all but three of the markers in student success initiatives, that's reading and math, rates five and eight, all but three are greater than the state average. In bilingual education, English and second language, page forty. That includes performance and progress measures disaggregated by various program instructional modes for students identified as current adults in the eighteen nineteen school year. And as you know, in this district, our population is still considerably small for the state of Texas. On page forty-two, we have star participation information, in which you see we had one hundred percent participation, all tests. Higher than the state average. Attendance graduation dropout rates are on page forty-three. This is where you go back to seventeen eighteen data. Our attendance rate at ninety-six point three is higher than the state average. Our annual dropout rate for grades seven through eight was zero percent, and rate of nine through twelve was one point four percent. Best I can tell, that was two students. Four-year longitudinal graduation rates at the state level was ninety-five point eight percent, and our federal rate was ninety-five point eight percent. Our five-year extended longitudinal graduation rate is ninety-seven point three percent, greater than, which was greater than the state. Also, the six-year extended longitudinal graduation rate is ninety-three point eight percent, which was also greater than the state. Our graduation profile is on page forty-five. And where our graduation profile is at the Foundation High School Program for No Endorsements, we had twenty-six point seven percent of our graduates at the Foundation High School Program. With distinguished level of achievement was seventy-three point three percent. That's on page forty-five. The college career military readiness on page forty-six. Our CCMR graduates were at seventy point six percent, higher than the state of sixty-five point five. Our college ready graduates were fifty-three point nine percent, higher than the state of fifty percent. Career military ready graduates were thirty-seven point one percent, higher than the state of twenty-eight point seven percent. Then on pages forty-eight through forty-nine, our college career military related indicators. TSIA, which is your Texas Success Initiative, results in both math and reading were at six point eight percent. The state was eighteen point one. I would like to say that last year was our first year to give that test in our district, so I don't think we've had as much participation as we will when we get, where we're actually giving that test a little more often. Our numbers, our percentage of CTE coherent sequence students was eighty-three percent, higher than the state of fifty-eight point four percent. Our AP results participation, our AP results in participation was eight point six percent, which the state has twenty-five point eight percent. Our examines scored forty-five point seven percent, which the state was fifty point seven percent. And that is at the three or four levels of score of a one to a four. Our SAT and ACT results, we tested fifty-three point nine percent, which the state has an average of seventy-four point six percent. We scored at or above the criterion rating at forty point five percent, which the state was at thirty-seven point nine. We have a couple of areas I feel like we can work on here, but for the most part, in that section on the related indicators, I feel like we scored very strong compared to our state, to the state average. Other post-secondary indicators on page fifty of your book would be that advanced dual-credit course completion, we had thirty-two point eight percent. The state shows that forty-three point four percent. And then what you have is an interesting, and I think very valid marker for research, is that is our twenty-sixteen seventeen graduates, and how many of them enrolled in Texas Institution of Higher Education after graduation? So we have to give that two-years data. We had fifty-eight point six percent, while the state had fifty-four point six percent. And then graduates in Texas Institution of Higher Education that did not have to take a developmental education course throughout their first year. We had forty-nine point five percent, at the state's percentage of fifty-nine point two. Then on pages fifty-one through fifty-two, it gives student information, and it's a great fill of information. I will say, we use this report a lot in our district improvement planning committee, and we get a lot of great information here. The student enrollment, including enrollment by grade level, by ethnicity, by certain student identification indicators, and students with disabilities, non-primary eligibility category, and other student information, including graduation information, retention rates, and class size information. One of the things I wanted to point out here, which I think is significant, is for class size information, a lot of people consider that an indicator of a strong education program. All of our class size averages are lower than the state average except for one grade throughout our entire school district, and that's kinder. So hopefully, as we're getting more room in those classes, we'll be able to lower those as well. I think one out of thirteen grade levels being lower than state average is fantastic. The state information, I mean, sorry, staff information on pages fifty-three through fifty-four include total staff, staff by classification, teachers by ethnicity and gender, teachers by highest degree, value of years of experience, experience of campus leadership, staff salary, and teacher turnover rates. I wanted to point out that something that our district improvement planning committee always points out as a strength in this district is our average years of experience for our educators is always higher than the state average years. In this case, we have fourteen, our average is fourteen years compared to the state at eleven point one. And then program information on page fifty-five, which is your last page of the taper, student enrollment by program and teachers by program and the population that they serve. I did want to point out that I feel like we have a very strong gifted and talented program, and I think that shows with our average of nine point seven percent with the state average at eight point one percent. Not meaning to run too quickly through this, if y'all have anything that you want to discuss other than the other handouts that I have for you, I'll be more than happy to, or we can move to this next one. There's a lot of data on this next sheet, I think we've had it at your table. Okay, so just to get a good comparison of our county schools compared to state, region, and all schools in Lamar County, all public schools in Lamar County, I'll start out by saying fifty-five out of eighty-four markers, and there's eighty-four markers on these three pages, because you take each one, and in the past, we're pretty much just focused on where everybody was in approaches. But I don't feel like we're giving full credit to all the work that's been done. We just work on approaches. I want to look at approaches, meets, and masters. Triples our data. We started with two-years worth of data and looked through all of this and did some comparison. Fifty-five of the eighty-four markers increased by the state to say. Fifty-five of eighty-four increased or stayed the same. Seventy-four percent were equal to or above the state, or region, or above. So it's one thing to compare yourself to another school, but I feel like we should be at or above the state in everything. That's my, that's my measure. The region as well, visit with our principals when we have meetings, we talk about this all the time. The way I did highlight this for you, I did try to use their school colors. The red for Chisholm means nothing, but that is one of her school colors, so it didn't mean anything other than that, everybody else had a blue, or a shade of blue. So you see some highlighting there. So the method behind my madness was to highlight anyone, whichever one was the highest on each row. So as you read across each row, you'll see a darker green and a lighter green. The darker green was the highest in the row. The lighter green is the second highest in the row. Okay, so there's that, make sense as you read across one of these? And then you have a parenthesis with a plus or a minus number in it. That's the comparison of that number to the year prior. All right, so just for example, grade three reading approaches are above is at the state level was seventy-six percent. You see a minus one out beside it. That's because that percent dropped one at the state level. Okay, so if I read across that one, then you'll understand all these. At the region, it was seventy-eight percent with a plus one. That means the region, that seventy-eight was seventy-seven last year, so it increased. You see North Lamar was eighty-one percent with a minus one, so it went down one. You see Paris at sixteen, I think, I don't even need to call those out, but you get the gist of how that works. So one way I like to look at this is you can look down, and as you look down into these columns, you can see who's got a lot of highlights. That's just one way to look at this data, and I think that's important because when you're seeing yourself, and I see us shaded a great many times, that means across, comparing ourselves to state, region, and everybody in our county, we're highlighted either at the first or the second highest score. But seventy-four percent of those are highlighted, which means they're equal to or above the state or region or both. I want to address briefly the ones that are not highlighted. So I've got a little bit of information about those that are not highlighted. So in the North Lamar column, let's just talk about the ones that are not highlighted. The first one I'm going to talk about is grade three math meets or above. So that's meets or masters. It's fifty-six percent, but it's not highlighted. It had twelve percent gain. It's not highlighted because it's not one of the top two. It's still above state average. Still good. All right, so if you'll allow me to do that, I'm just going to go down to North Lamar, and I'm going to discuss just the ones that are not highlighted and tell you kind of how I'm looking at them. Grade four reading approaches is above state. Grade four reading meets or above is equal to the region. Grade four reading masters is three below the region. Okay, we'll drop down to grade four writing because grade four math was all green. Grade four writing, approaches are above at sixty-five percent is above the region. Meets are above is four below the region, and masters is three below the region. I'm in grade four writing. Grade five reading, approaches are above at ninety percent with a five point, a five percent increase is above state and above region. Fifty-one percent with four point increase was one below the region. And twenty-six percent with four percent increase is equal to the region. I'm going to skip grade five math just because it's fabulous, and I'm going to drop to grade five science. Seventy-four percent is equal to the region at approaches. At meets, forty-three percent is five below region, and masters seventeen percent is four below region. Grade six reading, sixty-four percent is two below the region. Meets is one below the region, and masters is two below the region. Grade six math, approaches was second, so we're going to skip that at eighty-five percent and go to meets as three below the region, and masters is six below the region. I hate to only call out the ones that aren't highlighted, but I think we're seeing that even though they're not highlighted, some of those, it just might be because somebody else did really well, but yet were still higher than that mark that I've got in my mind of state and region. If you look at grade seven, grade reading and math, what are the names of all of them? Just grade seven, just knock it out of the car. In grade seven, writing is one, only one percentage point below the regional average. Meets are above is above state and region, and masters, well, we won't count. Grade eight reading, eighty-four percent was equal to the region. Meets are above, fifty-three percent was above the region, and masters was three below the region. All within striking distance, if they're not above. Grade eight math, skipping to meets, is two below the region, masters is five below the region. Grade eight science, this is a target area. So you have approaches at seventy-eight percent, which is above the region. Even though it looks like a target area for us, still above the region. Meets are above is fifty percent, it's above the region. Masters, twenty percent, it's above the region. Still think it's doing great. Grade eight social studies, approaches are above, above state and above region. I'm going to drop all the way down to end-of-course now, so end-of-course Algebra I. Eighty-six percent were above state and region. Meets are above, fifty-six percent were equal to the region, and masters were four below the region. End-of-course Biology, I'm going to drop down to masters, we are above the region. End-of-course U.S. History, at meets are above, we're above the region. At masters, we are five below, so I'm sure we'll be working on that. And this last page is very interesting data because it's not something that you can point to as well, but I think it gives a better feel for the overall district because it's just going to combine everything, all grades, all subjects. And I have to say that at approaches or above at eighty-one percent, we are still in the top. Meets are above fifty-one percent, we increased by two, and masters at twenty-one percent, we increased by one percentage point, and it's still above the region. All grades English, English and arts reading, you can see approaches and meets are in the top two, and then the masters at nineteen is still above the region with an increase of one. All grades math, the top two, we're, are in the top two. Masters at twenty-two percent is one below the region with an increase of two percentage points. All grades writing, it's not colored in, but it's still good because it's sixty-seven percent, we're equal to the region in approaches. In meets, we are just one percentage point below the region, and in masters, we are equal to state and above the region, and that's our all grades writing. In science, we're in the top two, in approaches and meets, masters were equal to the region. And in social studies, all grade, people are in the top two in approaches. At meets are above, we're above region, and at masters, we are above region. So in this category, thirteen of eighteen of these were the same or better than last year. Sixteen out of eighteen of these were above region or state average. I feel like we're doing a great job. There are some areas to target, there always will be. My magic. My magic, whatever there is, we're going to attack it and go after. So, a lot of information, a lot of data I've shared with you. What questions can I answer for you?
Do we find sometimes that there are groups like fourth grade and, and, uh, they just seem to struggle more than other groups? And, or, I'm, I'm just saying fourth grade, third grade, fifth grade, whatever. But as they go through school, uh, and we, we get test scores year after year after year, do we kind of target certain groups that, that seem to struggle more in math or?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we kind of see that here with one of these groups.
When I look at these, and I, again, the reason, the whole reason I did the difference in last year and this year is I want to know what direction we're going. I think that's very critical. Um, if we're not in the top two, then I'm looking, do we have a plus? Did we improve? If we didn't have a plus, you know, yeah, I see a couple of areas. One of those areas, we spent today and will spend all day tomorrow training for our new Read 180 program. It's called Reading 180. It's a, it's a strong intervention program that utilizes blended learning for students that are two or more grade levels below reading level. Try and improve. So, we're working with that right now. We're bringing that in with our state comped money, that money that comes to us designated for out-risk performance, designated for this very targeting behavior. Uh, we went and visited a district that's running Waterford. That's a literacy program for pre-kindergarten. Online, it's fifteen minutes a day, and we went and visited them. That, uh, they're coming to visit, the company, Rev is going to come visit with me about that tomorrow. So, we're looking at areas to target where we feel like we have weaknesses, and then we're also sharing this data with principals. We did, we, we talked through it to make sure they're aware, and if they can then relay that information to staff during planning. So, yes, we will target anything that does not show growth, or at least is staying up in the top two, where we feel like we belong. That's including state and region average, regardless of any other district.
And also on the high school level, where you have your, um, core subjects and you have your EOCs, are we, um, striving to be aware of, uh, class sizes, especially in our core subject areas and those classes that are EOCs, uh, that, uh, in order to effectively teach, uh, there's a big difference in having twenty in a class and twenty-eight in a class?
I agree with you a hundred percent.
And are we aware of?
I'd like to see less than twenty in any regular class that's for content, especially in a class like English that requires a great deal of grading. Um, it's, it's just a different animal. So, that is a, that is a target for me, is hoping that we can keep those class sizes below twenty and not below eighteen. Uh, your accelerated classes, I feel like can handle more. I still wouldn't want to see them over twenty-five. But I don't think our accelerated classes should be small, where then a teacher could maybe help loosen the burden of those classes that are large at the rate of that. Because I feel like that's, if you're going to have a large class, it needs to be with some stronger learners, and then the, the students that might struggle probably need to be in a smaller class size, I would suggest. That's what I've come at here with. So, yes, ma'am?
And I know our class averages sound good, but when it comes to those classes, core classes and EOC-tested classes, sometimes the averages need to even be better.
I agree with you. I agree with you. So, taking all that into consideration, Mr. Watson and I have already talked about it during staffing meetings, that that will be a target for us to consider and make sure we can do something about that this year. Going into next. I bet we'll do this again next year.
Thank, thank you. We'll move to, if there's nothing else, we'll move to item five C, consideration and approval of donating, donation from ExxonMobil.
Okay, so ExxonMobil, um, does, does a very supportive appeal for science programming. They gave Stone Parker and the high school five hundred dollars each to support their needs, however, the principal determines they need to suspend it for sci, as long as it goes towards science. So, what we need is you to consider the approval of these checks from ExxonMobil to Stone Parker and High School.
Motion made by Bo and second by Joel. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Item five D, discussion only, drug prevention. Mr. Watson?
Okay. Uh, over the last several months, there's been different questions that pop up, anywhere from vaping to, you know, what we're doing as far as drug prevention in our schools. And so, I thought it'd be a good deal if we just kind of summed up some things that we were doing, some things that we're thinking about doing in the future, and share that with you guys. Uh, the first thing was the student drug testing. Whenever they come to do a student drug test, it's random, and they test twenty-five students, which is about three percent of our student body. Uh, the thing is, it costs seven hundred dollars every time they come and test. And so, in the past, they've done four, but because of budget restraints, they cut it out to two this year, one in the spring, one in the fall. The thing about the student drug testing is that when you start looking at who we test, which is anybody that's in extracurricular activities, or anybody that drives and parks out there in a parking lot, you're talking about seventy percent of our population, our student population at the high school. So, when, when you get that random test, it's just of those seventy percent of those students. So, you still have thirty percent that, that never get tested or have to worry about that. I had some questions about what does that drug test, test? And, and in your board book, it has that, and I listed those. Uh, I did have a question, did they also test for, uh, substances that they take to kind of dilute that, that results? Uh, they call it validity testing, and right now, they, they have it in the past, but they said they could add that at no additional cost, so we asked them to do that. And so, uh, they, they can take that, and if they find any of that in there, they just have an invalid test, is what it say. And so, then they can come back and test. Uh, as, as Mr. Scarborough has, has voiced in the past, uh, because I talked with Ms. Stewart, Chief Boz, and Mr. Scarborough to get this information together, so they all contributed this. Uh, when a student tests positive, they, they're out of their activity and they can't drive. Now, the only problem with that sometimes is like, if somebody's in football, and football's over, and you do the drug test and they get tested, well, they're not playing football because they're already out of football. And if it's a sophomore, they may not be driving, so that's, that's all there is. And so, what we would like to do in the future, what we're talking about doing, is, is offer some counseling outside. And, and we can't make it mandatory, because if a student goes outside, I mean, if they're doing something outside of school, there's no punishment for that. But if we test them and they test positive, work with their parents, and, and I've been talking to, uh, I talked to Darrell Bruce, or I actually, Officer Boz talked to Darrell Bruce, uh, who is the probation officer, and his fiance does some counseling with kids like this. And so, uh, we're looking at maybe joining up with her next year to help, uh, maybe do some counseling if somebody tests, and then we also offer that to the parents so they can, the kids can get help. Because our whole goal is, number one, keep drugs out of our school. Number two, help kids get on the right path. And so, that's, uh, one way that we can do that. Uh, we are looking at maybe going back up to four, if we can get within the budget next year. Like I said, the test does cost, uh, seven hundred dollars per test for twenty-five kids. If you look on the second page, the drug detection dogs, uh, you know, after the City of Paris got their dog, uh, Officer, uh, Chief Boz has worked out with, uh, the City of Paris Police Department for their canine to come out and, and do the drug search with that dog. Uh, the problem is, they're so busy, it's hard for them to get out of here very often. Uh, last year, uh, Mike correctly pointed, they came one time last year, and it looks like they may be able to come one time this year because of their schedule. And what they do is, they got to train that dog, I think, so many times a month or so many times a year, and they use that as one of their training days. And so, what we were proposing is go back and, and start contracting with the canine service to come out and do our drug, uh, dog testing. And, uh, Officer Boz had, had got a bid for three hundred and forty dollars a visit, which to me, you get more bang for your buck with that than, than the student drug test. And the reason for that, that's going to test every car, that's going to test every locker that we have. And, uh, at three hundred and forty dollars a visit for a half-day, uh, you know, it's just more effective. And so, what we've done is, we, we went ahead and scheduled three this spring, and then hopefully we'll do six, three in the fall and three in the spring next year, uh, at that price. Mike, did you have anything else you want to add about that?
Well, that's, that's it. They, uh, we, we did do a little bit lower rate than before, uh, because what they're going to do is come half-day to Paris, for Chisholm, and a half a day, uh, out here reporting to Sarah, that's why she called me today. So, we're getting a little bit better rate than what we had before.
Uh, one of the big things that has been very strong out here for many years is our Crime Stalkers Organization. Uh, Officer Boz gets a lot of good tips on not only drugs, but all kinds of different misbehaviors, uh, through that. And that's, and most of y'all know what that Crime Stalkers Organization, uh, represents. Uh, we can plan, uh, we can plan to continue supporting that organization and, and hopefully even build on what they have now. Uh, as far as doing drug prevention awareness programs, uh, we would like to start scheduling at least two a year, one in the spring, uh, fall, and one in the spring. Uh, I think that Mr. Scarborough has something scheduled already. Do you want to tell me what, what that is?
We have a, we want to hit on some reminder for each class tomorrow and Wednesday, and we have a parent coming in that had personal experience with, um, vaping, and she's going to share that experience with our kids tomorrow, as long as all goes well. So, we're looking forward to that, as long as everything pulls up, you know, her skills kind of watch. But that should be tomorrow.
And this is a parent that had a child that was hospitalized?
She.
She herself?
Yes.
Okay.
So, a personal lesson from her online.
So, kind of give the students some more information on, on the vaping or the dangers of vaping. Uh, we're looking at vaping detectors, and I'm just going to leave it at that, because I know Ms. Stewart has some more information on that a little bit later. And, uh, one thing I didn't mention is the Zone Thirty-Two. Uh, it, it addresses several different issues in the, right? Social, emotional, you name it. And it does touch on some drug prevention, too, but, uh, it deals with a multitude of things that can help kids. So, those are some things that we have in place to try to prevent drugs in our schools, because that's our number one goal. And plus, we want kids to make good decisions so that they can be productive citizens, uh, of our community. Uh, the last thing we'll talk about, and it's, it's something I want you to start thinking about, uh, as we get into next year, it's not good to change policy at mid, mid-year because the things that you've done in the first semester, if you do something different in the second semester and it's not consistent, then, then you start having issues. But, but one thing, and I've talked to a couple of you guys, uh, something I'm very passionate about is, whenever we do have someone that gets caught with drugs in the school, like we said, we do not want drugs in our school, and we want to prevent it in any form or fashion. But it's, even though our policy is written, where, when it's a discretionary, that we can either expel them or not, it's, it's pretty been, pretty much been the board policy kind of thinking that we need to expel those kids. The problem with the expelling is, number one, they're no longer on your road. You do not get any ADA money. So, like, you know, we had some earlier in the year that missed a good part of the semester. You're talking about, what I calculated on that, we lost somewhere around six thousand dollars on those kids. You know, if you have four of them for a semester, that's, that's expelled for the semester. Now, you're talking about twelve thousand dollars. So, one, it's, it's a fine, it cuts out into our finances, but two, it kicks them out on the street, and, and nobody's helping those kids. And so, what we're going to look at proposing to you when we start looking at next year's policies, is to look at, uh, doing a long-term placement in DAP. That's what the other three school districts in our county do. And what that accomplishes is, number one, they stay on our, on our ADA road, and so that we get money for them. Number two, we can bring in while they're in DAP, once a week, we can bring in counseling to give them, uh, drug awareness, drug prevention counseling, and, and just, I think it's a better program for us and for them. To me, it's a win-win if we do that, and it helps the students hopefully get back on track. Uh, I, I, I've been very pleased with Ms. Bozart's progress in the, uh, DAP, the, some of the therapeutic things that are going on, it's getting our kids transitioned back into, uh, making good decisions. And so, I think that this would also help them. So, when we start getting into, into, toward the end of this year, looking at toward next year, I would like y'all start thinking about, you know, maybe going that route. I just wanted to present it to you. Mike, do you have anything else you want to put? Clyde? Can y'all have any questions? Okay?
We'll move on to item five E, consideration and approval, CKE Local.
Okay, if you remember last month, we did a policy update on all our local policies. We looked at our CKE Local, uh, which was dealing with our, uh, police officers. Our policy still had it written as that we were contracting with the City of Paris for resource officers. So, we knew we needed rewrite our policy on that. And so, Ms. Stewart and myself and Officer Boz, uh, had, had come up and looked at some other school districts, what they did for police departments. And so, uh, I got, uh, Chief Boz to, to put in the wording that he preferred, and so, uh, we're going to ask you to adopt that CKE Local. Before you do, Mike, did you have anything else you want to talk about in that policy?
No, basically, we wanted to stay consistent with everybody else in the area. Uh, so, what I did is went in and, and some of the policies that were on some of the other ones that I found, uh, the law had just recently changed, so I updated, uh, that information on there, and I just transferred that all over to be consistent with what the law says in education. And, thank you.
Any other questions? Who recommends you pass that?
I'm, I'm.
Motion's made by Sheila and second by Bo. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right, item six, superintendent's report.
Okay, if you would, please look at your election information page that I gave you earlier. Uh, this gives you all of the important dates in regards to our election that's coming up on May second. We've got two open seats, uh, for our school board election. The candidate filing period opens Wednesday, January fifteenth, and will remain open through Friday, February fourteenth. Uh, applications can be picked up here at the Roy Chadwick Administration Building. The deadline to return the completed application is Friday, February fourteenth at five o'clock. Uh, as you can see, early voting will begin on Monday, April twentieth, and will go through Tuesday, April twenty-eighth. It will take place here at the Administration Building from eight AM to six PM. And on the day of the election, we will have multiple polling sites. They're listed on the bottom. Uh, on May second, the polls open at seven AM and close at seven PM. And this year, we will have, uh, voting sites at the Reno City Hall, Vol, Volunteer Fire Department, Direct Baptist, Parker Elementary, and Lamar County Services Building. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that? Okay? Um, if you would, please look at your Halo Smart Sensor page that I gave you. Um, as you all know, vaping is an issue within schools that administrators across the nation are having to address. Um, the Halo systems that we purchased are currently in use in many school districts. We're going to use these in areas where the administrators can monitor, uh, where we're not allowed to put cameras. Uh, these systems, they detect vaping, THC, smoke, formaldehyde, benzene, and VOCs. And so, examples of that would be like, um, emissions from a cigarette or acetone fingernail polish. It also picks up on like a paint scent, glues, adhesives. Um, each one of these devices cover a hundred and forty-four square feet. Um, we purchased them to put in the high school first. We want to see if they're helpful to our administrative staff there. If we see that they are helpful, once we get them installed, then we're going to replace them at the middle school as well. These sensors also have a detector, so if someone tries to tamper with them, um, it will immediately sound off, similar to like, um, a fire alarm. Um, they have an alerting system on them, so if they do sense vaping or any type of smoke, they don't go off like a fire alarm. they don't go off like a fire alarm. We can set them to either text message or email our administrative staff, however they prefer, for us to set that up when we go through our training. Does anyone have any questions regarding the systems? Okay. Do you know any schools that are using these? Well, I had, there is a list that the company gave me. There's some in the Longview area, and they are actually out of that area. That's where we purchased them from, a place called Griffin Technologies. They are fairly expensive. They run a thousand and ninety-nine dollars a piece. So, that's why we wanna make sure that they are beneficial to our administrative staff before we purchase them for the middle school. Okay, principals, at this time, if you would, please come forward. January is school board appreciation month, and we want you all to know how much we appreciate you for your time. It takes a lot of dedication to be a board member, and each one of our campuses are here to present you with an item or items. Who wants to go first?
I'll, I'll go with the bags up there for you guys. You guys there, they're cookies for our culinary arts department, so enjoy.
I already found that.
Sure. My class that was up here earlier has a presentation that they wanted to show you guys. And I also, so we're doing that. Also, wanna present you with a painting from one of our students that has your, all of your stuff on here for this year for the school board, has your rocket, right in the space, I've mentioned it. We thought each year, we'd try to do something like this to give you guys to, to absorb what you've got here. Thank you. Thank you, hearts.
But you wanna step around because you're working, you take such a couple of videos. Whatever you have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for you, cause I thought we needed this.
One of these is from the secondary class, and one's from the junior.
Sorry?
Okay, so that's for you. One's from the secondary class, and then one's from, okay, good. And then there is that, also for you. And then that's for you, and then, one's from second, and one's from third.
Kelly, this is from our office.
We're gonna show a couple of videos, so if y'all wanna get up in your seat where you can see it, we can move to the, um...
Okay, the first one that I'm gonna show is from Stone.
This is a special video for Allianz. Welcome to the Clorport, this is Jason. Very excited to be the first in the media class for the Royal Mars film school. We have the opportunity to be the pioneer in class, laying the foundation of classes to come. Through this class, we have learned filming and editing skills, and focus on making content to promote our school, to, to highlight the awesome students and staff, and the other great things at Stone High School. We plan to film announcements, anti-bullying, social media, best practice, study tips, U A L winners, student of the month, player of the week, and funny random skits. While taking the class, we learn how to record videos, audio techniques, and video editing skills. Our shows are presented in newsroom style fashion at the Clorport. Thank you for your time. We just wanna thank the school board for everything they do for us. And if you wanna watch some of our creative videos, just go to the, go to my website, guys, that's on our site, that's on the links.
Thank you for serving our students without expecting anything in return.
Thank you for serving our students without expecting anything in return.
Thank you for serving our students without expecting anything in return.
Thank you for helping those kids and materials that we need to be successful.
Thank you for taking time out of your day to put it on the platform.
Thank you for helping our students without expecting anything in return.
Thank you for serving our students without expecting anything in return.
Thank you for serving our students without expecting anything in return.
Make sure, make sure we have policy at the students' office.
Thank you for serving our students without expecting anything in return.
Thank you for helping those kids and materials that we need to be successful.
Thank you for taking time out of your day to put it on the platform.
Help school, help your students, and experiment with everything you can for us to learn.
And taking your time, I'm, I'm, you're getting focused on us.
Thank you for letting children, policies and procedures to follow.
Thank you for taking time out of your day to put it on the platform.
Also, thank you for serving our students without expecting anything in return.
Thank you for helping our students without expecting anything in return at Stone High
Thank you for serving our students without expecting anything in return.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you all for all you do. We truly appreciate your support.
I asked Ms. Stewart if she would post all of this stuff on the wall so we could display it till next month's board meeting, so we would all be able to see it. But make sure the students know, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item seven, executive session. The board will conduct a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one, subchapters D and E, Texas Government Code five five one point oh seven four, Personnel Matters, and Texas Government Code five five one point oh seven two, Property and Facilities, at seven oh one.